I'll take your help. I change to us.
Thank you.
I think.
For the next time. We all understand that there's something different. Good afternoon. Today's Monday, March tenth. And this is a combination work session with a special meeting for the city council for Trinidad. First item on the agenda, we have to make some changes. On the agenda, we're gonna flip everything. So work session items one through four will be first. Special meeting will be second. And executive session will be third. That way you all don't have to sit here.
Okay.
And wait for us. I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
And motion. Shu, second. Call the vote, please.
Devota?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Chermel?
Yes.
Okontri?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Gregor?
Yes. So I am the one about the work session. It's my late twenty twenty-four season recap and twenty twenty-five season preview. And I see Mr. Revah in the audience, so come on down. Come on down. But this isn't the price of life.
Ah, no.
Figure that out.
Are you clicking?
Oh.
Is it tied in or can you click there?
I think it's Roger. Slideshow. Maybe that's it.
Call I do.
Yeah. There you go.
All right. So sorry it took me so long to get here this year, but made it. Wanted to just talk about last season. I sent over the basically the P and L from twenty twenty-four. I show you what the numbers look like, what the costs were, all of the. And thank you. As always, thank you guys for being a part of that and supporting us out there. All that you do, it's pretty amazing. But with that being said, I wanted to mainly spotlight, you know, some of the things that we achieved over the summer. Well, actually last winter and then the summer. So we took the old bathhouse at the resort, didn't change anything on the exterior of it. Of course, that means a lot to me to obviously keep everything the way it is. But the interior of the bathhouse was unusable. It would have been nearly impossible, I think, to try to restore that back to functionality. So instead, we turned it into what we call a bunkhouse for employees, which they were extremely grateful for because, you know, the duplex which we had used in years past is, that's gonna be our next big thing to have. But anyways, we started this last, I guess, in February, January, February of twenty-four. This is kind of fast forward. Basically, on the left, you see layout what our plans were. When we started, on the right, we'd already gutted the facility and we were starting to frame it up. There again, put in subfloor, all new electrical, all new plumbing, obviously, all new inspections, and basically making it a six-room living compound with just a large commons area in the middle, kitchen, two separate bathrooms from Alphina, and all of the roofs being having separation. Wanted to mention, there was an old cabin up on the property that, you know, had fallen down, obviously, on the top left there. So we went in and we reclaimed that wood for that cabin and all of the, I don't know if you've noticed, but all these little metal tins. We pulled every nail and every tin off of that cabin. And we reused every nail and every tin and the wood. And those little tins, what they were used for is back in the day when the winds would come through, people, and they're all like Baltimore Oyster Company tins. And so when the winds or weather would come through, people eat those, eat the oysters. And then they would use those tins to plug up, seal up the cracks in their houses. And so we really were intrigued by that. So we basically deconstructed the cabin and used every bit of it as the ceiling in this facility. There's another picture of the main common area on the right. That's done the constructing, the kitchen area and countertops. That's basically what the kitchen ended up looking like right there in the middle. You know, we stained and sealed the ceiling. Turned out absolutely beautiful. Took logs from the property, skinned them, treated them, and used them as uprats in the main part of the building. And then down here on the bottom left, that's how our shower facilities ended up looking. Our bathroom facilities, they really turned out beautiful. And then, of course, we created some privacy, you know, basically separation from our employees and the guests. So we built a deck and added a little bit of a zero type desk in there. So that was the biggest project that we had last year. I say that. It's comparable to the electrical upgrades that we made up there, which were massive. We installed three four-hundred-amp services, two in the RV partial campgrounds and one at the bunkhouse in the laundry facility, which was a miracle in itself of achieving, you know, trying to pull San Isobel in and get everybody on the same page. But, I mean, in the partials, we, it was a full reconstruction of the partials. I mean, rerun all of the wire underground. And, I mean, it was a massive undertaking. And then along with that, we upgraded all of our pedestals, all of our electric boxes. Moved, upgraded all the electrical to fifty-amp service, which, you know, people in the RV world are extremely grateful for. So it really turned out, turned out beautifully. And then we went back in with a bunch of loads of aggregate and cleaned up the paths. And we're still, we're gonna, we're gonna do that again this year and really make that partial area very nice and comfortable for people in the RV. It was kind of, you know, it's kind of up there in the woods and it just kind of just neglected, I think, in the past. You know, it's really hard to drive through. There's a lot of ruts and roots coming up out of the ground. And then you'd get to the electrical, you know, try to plug in and you wouldn't have any. And, you know, so it was just a big renovation that needed to happen. I think, I think our other people, our guys that did it did an amazing job. So, yeah, so we went in with all new fifty-amp service, new pedestals, new fifty-amp boxes. Actually, twenty, thirty, and fifty-amp boxes all the way through the partials. Thirty-plus loads of aggregate for road building in the partials and Upper West primitive campgrounds that were, have been working on development for the last few years. So we're getting close on that. In addition, we had over three hundred hours of man hour, machine hours, constructing the Upper West Road and site paths. Over a hundred hours of clearing timber along Cherry Creek for future primitive sites and installation of new six bear-proof receptacles. And we also installed, in fact, about a dozen more fireboxes on the property. Marketing efforts last year. We filmed, it's called the New Fly Fisher. It's the number-one fly fishing show on television and YouTube and the internet. Those guys came out and they were there for a week leading up to Cape Man Music Festival. And they filmed Trinidad, they filmed the Highway Legends, they filmed North Lake, everything in between. And so it's gonna be an awesome, you know, tourism marketing tool for Trinidad, Trinidad tourism, and obviously for Monument and North Lake. So great, great bunch of guys, full-blown production for one week. It was, they had film, TV, you know, basically filming crew. And we had boats out there and it was quite the experience, but we enjoyed it. And it's gonna be a, I think it's gonna be a very, very good thing as far as marketing this area for outdoors. Between Cape Man Music Festival and Monument Lake Resort last year, we spent about eight-one-thousand dollars in social radio, fly fishing show, and TV ads. Just in socials alone, which the easiest to track, we had a three-point-two-million impressions out there. So basically how many times our ads are hitting, you know, the social media funnel. And then of that, two-point-seven-million reach where we know that there was interaction. We know that people, you know, people, they either hit our site, hit one of the sites, or, you know, had some type of reaction from them on socials alike or whatever. Also sent out over two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand emails to over thirty-thousand subscribers to what we've created on the marketing side. So cool thing is, we've got thirty-thousand people out there that are interested in what we're doing, you know. And with that, we, our marketing team is continually sending email blasts out, you know, just trying to draw more people into the area. That's just some pictures that people have sent to us over the last year. And I just thought I'd put them in there for you. Pretty beautiful place.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-five outlook. We're going to resurface and paint the upper bar, lower bar, and restaurant courtyard and all the offways leading up to the courtyard. So we're just gonna finish our facelift really on the property. It's, we've already done the hotels, we've done the cabins. We did have some roofing that we're gonna be doing out there here pretty quick. And, but, yeah, that would be a kind of a big undertaking is getting all that resurfaced and painted before season starts. Gonna continue to develop the Upper West Campgrounds. And I don't know if y'all remember enough, but anyways, there's a west road that, as you're coming around the lake, and it cuts up, you know, on the mountaintop. I think it was an old utility road, maybe. I can tell where there was some picnic tables out there at one time, you know, years and years ago. But anyways, we started on that two years ago, recutting that road. And as we're recutting it, we're just building, you know, building site pads, you know. And it's gonna be more of an ultra-prem, ultra-primitive type camping, you know, not to, I don't, as of right now, I don't see us putting fireboxes and things like that. It'd be gas, you know, propane heat. But beautiful untouched area of Monument Lake Resort that really, if you do have thirty people up there camping, you don't know they're up there. That's kind of the coolest part. It's just, it's just kind of secluded, really private area. So I like it a lot. Yeah, continue to develop the Upper West. I would like to increase the lodging prices by ten dollars for weekends. With that being said, we're dropping, we're gonna plan to drop the price. And we did this a little bit last year and just trying to get our occupancy up. So we drop our prices during the week, you know, try to draw people out. So really, we're doing like a thirty percent drop during the week, but we're, and then we're trying to recover a little bit of that on the weekends by doing, you know, escalating that, those spaces by ten bucks. And then, yeah, we're just gonna keep trying to improve little by little. And we are gonna have Cape Man twenty twenty-five. And that's been a really good experience. It's, it keeps growing and that's, that's the idea. Last but not least, I do have a request to, I'd like for y'all to maybe consider. I'd like to see if I couldn't get a fifteen-year extension on the current lease. Reason why I ask for that is I believe that it will take fifteen years on top of my already. I don't know, we're four in, maybe there's eleven left or something like that in that neighborhood. I think it'll probably take every bit of that for me to get my money back. So, just, that's kind of a joke, but not really. But, so, yeah, I mean, I'd like for y'all to just take that into consideration. I think, I hope that you're happy with what we do. We're certainly happy with partnership and the support that we get from the city of Trinidad. Anybody that I've talked to, whether in government or out of government, one thing is consistent, and that is, I never imagined having quite a relationship with a municipality as I do with you guys. You guys, the support that y'all have given us is, was way beyond my expectations when we got into this. And we could thank you more for that. So, and that's, that's really it. That's a short sweep.
Okay. Here. Do you have any questions?
I don't. I'm glad to hear that y'all are feeling good about it and it's been worth your time. It's been a real pleasure to know that one of our assets is being so well taken care of. And I'm sure they will consider.
Hi, Brett. I was gonna ask you, are there safety measures in place for emergency for visitors, for emergency response?
As far as response from, like, if there was.
Yeah, a medical emergency, catastrophe.
Yeah, there, there. We've got measures in place. I can't give it to you off the top of my head, but we do have things posted out there as far as, you know, for medical assistance. You know, we're twenty-four hours a day too. So we've always got somebody, it's always supposed, everybody gets the information when they check in as to who to contact, what number to contact, twenty-four hours a day. We've got somebody on call all the time. So if anybody has any issues, and we've had some issues, I mean, and I think the response time's been very good, you know, nothing major, but, you know, we've had some issues out there. But, yeah, we are, we're very diligent, I think, as far as making sure people understand, you know, how to get help if any.
Thank you so much for keeping me up. Thank you.
So we're in year three, Brett. Year three?
Is that where we're in?
Year four.
Year four.
Year four of.
Of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. We're going into five from Monument Lake Resort.
God, the time is going by.
I know. I know.
Who's the headliner this year?
What's that?
Who's the headliner for Cape Man?
I can't tell you, guys. Friday. Friday, we announce on Friday. But it's gonna be good. You know, I hadn't mentioned this, we're extending to a four-day festival this year. So it'll be a Thursday through Sunday. The reason why we're doing that is, you know, the years passed, it's like, people get there on Friday morning, they get checked in, settled in, music starts, and I mean, it's, you know, it's music. It's on resort that whole time. And a lot, and a lot of people do an early arrival the night before to get settled in just to, you know, get music for the next three days. What we're, what our attempt is, what we're really promoting this year is more of an experience. So more of a, in doing a four-day event, you know, I do know that a lot of people show up on Wednesday night, which is great, get settled in, but then they go all day Thursday, go hiking and biking and side-by-side driving and four-wheel, you know, whatever they want to do, fishing, you know, and just to kind of expose them to the area a little bit more because the area is phenomenal. But I think in the years past is, is, you know, people are getting in on Friday morning, music starts at noon on Friday, and it doesn't stop for three days. And I think that people in that type of layout, they're not really getting to go out and see what's really, you know, what we have around us. Because, you know, if they do, they're gonna miss four or five shows. And so, you know, I think it's, you know, people try to weigh that out. And so we're just, basically, we're just creating another day of just, just go be for a day.
For the music starts.
Yeah. You're not gonna, you're not gonna miss anything. We're gonna have music Thursday night, but got all day Thursday to just check it out. That's all for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, I thank you for everything you do up there. It's a, it's a great place to visit. When you were mentioning the ultra-primitive campsites and no fire boxes up there, this, that's what caused me to think about this. I mean, a lot of people are presumably coming from areas where they may not have a good grasp of wildfire or, you know, fire, fire-wise behavior. How are people, how do you ensure people are attuned to that when they arrive and don't do silly things?
We have, again, we have twenty-four-hour, you know, especially in the evenings, we have people patrolling all night long and their stuff. And, you know, the biggest thing they're looking for is how people are burning, right? The fireboxes are obviously excellent to have, but still, you still fight that battle, right? Because, you know, if there's a burn ban effect, or if we're even at any type of level of burn ban, then there's sometimes whenever they can, they can burn in those fireboxes, but the lid's got to be down. So they're not really getting to enjoy the whole, you know, the whole campfire type thing. And, but it is what it is. I mean, we're not gonna burn the place down. We're not even gonna, we're not even gonna give it a thought, you know. And so, and we've had, shoot, we've had government officials up Trinidad and Los Angeles County, we had to go shut the fireboxes off, you know.
That wasn't me, by any chance?
Nobody in this room. But, you know, the thing, we take it extremely serious and we educate people as they're coming in, as where we're at. If there is a burn ban, what level it's at and what they're gonna have to adhere to as far as burning, burning any type of fire. Not in the, in the ultra-primitive type setting up there. Again, there won't, and there's no open fires on the property. It's either got to be in a firebox or a gas fire, you know, or, you know, propane, you know, heating element or, you know. But outside of that, there's no open fires at all. So we just try to make, we just try to educate people as they're coming in the gate.
I appreciate it. The other question I had, I've mentioned this in years past, and maybe potentially is wishful thinking. But, and I just wanted to say, congratulate you for the metrics you shared with the social media advertising and email campaign. I mean, that's really impressive. I mean, if you graph those year after year, are you definitely seeing an increase of just the metrics themselves? Are they remaining roughly constant?
Oh, no. It's, yeah, absolute increases year after year. And in every, we're saying in every aspect, whether, you know, from the marketing dollars being spent to, you know, to the people coming and visiting the resort. And I can tell you, after the first year of Cape Man Music Festival, we saw more new faces that next year than we ever, we ever dreamed of. I mean, you know.
I, the thing that I was gonna mention, and like I said, I don't know if it'd be possible, but I just, I think it would be really helpful to build camaraderie between Trinidad Business Core Group and Monument Lake because it really is a symbiotic relationship. But I was wondering if there's some way to incentivize people coming to your events to stop in Trinidad. And like, I thought maybe, you know, people could get like thirty percent off the admission fee if they presented Trinidad Restaurant or, I just think if you could advertise that and it would cause, I'll do a few things. You know, if someone comes, say, stops in one of the local outdoor stores and they feel that you're supporting them, it might incentivize them to share the existence of Monument Lake and vice versa. And I think it just causes a really positive business environment. It's just something I think would be super helpful. Maybe it's hard to handle that though, but.
I mean, I think it would just take some communication between, you know, us and however many businesses want to be involved in that. I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all. I think it, I think it'd be just fine. And we do, I mean, our, when we, just us specifically, when we market Monument Lake Resort, we put Trinidad right alongside, you know. I mean, it's important for people, you know, in my opinion, to experience Trinidad and Los Angeles County. And, and so we, our marketing efforts are not just centered around Monument Lake Resort, it's, it's the community, you know, and.
We definitely appreciate that. And I mean, I know you have other interests of Highway twelve as well, so.
We do. We do, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna move here. I'm, I'm just gonna talk, I'm gonna talk to one other person.
Hopefully, they're not watching this meeting.
No.
Thank you.
Are you, are you happy with the results? I'm looking at your financials here. I think you better ask for a thirty-year extension.
Yeah.
Is it?
I'm not, I'm not disappointed.
Okay.
We're not, I'm not, thankfully, I'm not going broke over it. I, I think if we, if we look back, and I remember things like this, y'all probably may not, you guys have a lot of meetings. But I do know that whenever we, when all this started, and I was sitting at that table, my remark was, you know, if we see the opportunity and we believe in it, we'll invest in it. And that's what we did. And, and I knew that it was gonna take some time to get this thing turned and going the way that we, you know, the original goals that I had set. And we're getting close. I know the bottom number, it looks rough, but the thing about it is, when you are pumping as much marketing into these things, I believe that we're, that we, our goal is to get our bookings to hit a million dollars, right? I think we're at six-hundred and, I don't know, six-hundred and four thousand or something like that. So we're not that far off. And that six-hundred and four, you also got to consider, you don't have to, but I want you to consider, there's about a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars of refunds that come. So basically, that six-oh-four is really seven forty-four if you hadn't refunded a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to people who've canceled and things like that. But that's just, we're gonna refund their, you know, they book and cancel, we're gonna do refunds. But whatever, you know, we're always trying to strategize and figure out how to, you know, people make reservations and stick with reservations. We're trying to get people there, not for three days out of the week, we're trying to get them there for seven days out of the week. And if that means, you know, knocking prices down during the week and building them up just a little bit on the weekend, it, it's, everything, like, again, everything that we do, it's got a strategy. I think we're, we're on our way. I think it's, you know, I've done worse in other businesses. But the thing about it is, is the play, it is captivating. It's where you wanna, it's where I want to be for the rest of my life. I literally do. And, and again, we're, I've been extremely fortunate in business and in life. And, and this is where, this is my destination, honestly. And Monument Lake, you know, Resort, both of those too. So it's, you know, the investment is worth it. And I do believe that it's turning little by little as years come along. I can see it. I can see it. So I'm no regret, excited about it. Why do I want fifteen more years? Because just, because I, you know, I, again, it's a destination for me. It's where, it's where I want myself, my family wants to be, and.
You know, when I first got on council, it was just, I You know, um, when I first got on council, it was just, I think I was on council when, you know, he first gave you that contract. But if I, memory serves me correctly, in the newspapers and, and it was just negative press over and over again at Monument Lake. And now, since you and your organization took over, Monument Lake is a given to have a positive experience for everybody. And that's what I look at. I mean, you know, we appreciate you. If we don't say we appreciate you, it's because you're so rock solid. Uh, your performance up there and the first time I went up, at the first year that you took over operations, it was like night and day up there. And to say it was neglected probably was an understatement, but I think this is just the foundation. And once you build the house, it's gonna be fantastic.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, I mean, it's a pretty easy landscape to work with.
Yes.
It really is. I mean, it's, but it, I mean, the people, myself, the people that work for me and with me. I mean, it's, I come from a tough, I come from corporate America, man, and it's hard. But if, if I could just, if, if this was all I had to do every day, dear Lord, I mean, it would be, it'd be heaven on earth, you know? And, and I have people that work for me up there. Nathan Wiggly, he, he's, he, he runs it right under me. And he's been with me through, this will be the third business now. And, um, and we've been, and he, he, he came from the same environment. It's, it was, we, we work in hard industries, you know, outside of this. And so for him to come up here and, and get to experience what he gets to experience every day and he runs it like, you know, like it's his. He cares about every single penny and every single guess and, and, and everyone's needs. And, uh, him and I, we sit back and look at it and we're like, how much closer to heaven can we get? You know, I mean, this is, it's, it is a, it is an absolute joy every single day. So again, we're, we don't wanna go nowhere. We, we love it and we will, we will continue to, to, uh, to hopefully grow tourism, continue to be good stewards out there, you know, and, and work towards making it better every day.
Thank you. Thank you for believing in us. We're glad we believed in you.
Glad, I'm, I'm, I'm glad you did. Believe in you, yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm not kidding. And, and I've met with other, you know, counties and, and cities around here. And one of the biggest things I can tell them is you guys have been absolute, I, I never, never could have expected such a good experience. And you guys, the way you guys have gotten behind, you know, that property is, is fantastic. So we appreciate it.
Anybody else have any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you.
I'd love this next season.
That's right.
Thank you.
Item number two is the tour of interviews. Did you get to pick one of them?
I did, Mayor, yes. And if I could, then just to begin this. So Mayor, council members, you have three vacancies for you, um, for the seven member board. You have been given the, uh, the, the, uh, the applicant information. And I do wanna emphasize to you that of the seven member board, five have to be from within the city. Two can be from the county. We already have one on that is a county resident, and that is Luis Lopez.
There's two.
There are two?
Yeah.
I thought it was only one.
Where did Pat go?
I noticed that in the applicants are less few.
There are the applicants swimming currently on the board.
Oh wait, there's one.
There's one?
No, there's another one.
Oh, okay.
There's Luis Lopez. Now, what's the other, the gentleman's name that's the school teacher?
Jeff Heck.
Jeff Heck. He's also a county resident.
Okay, okay.
We have our two.
Okay, good, thank you. Appreciate that.
So we can't appoint anybody that's not residing in the city?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So that being said, those of you that are applied that live in the county, how do you want to handle that, Mr. Downs?
Well, Mayor, I would just say, you know, I, I do wanna say that I have heard from multiple sources that Mr. Lopez may be leaving the boards now. He hasn't yet and I don't.
I can, I can address that. He's not allowed to leave. And, and by agreement, uh, he's a, he's our vice chair, not allowed to leave until we bring somebody in. What we're looking at that seat though, just if I may share, is somebody still maybe from the county, the auditor, somebody along that line. So we keep that relationship that we've had in the past, uh, in that flow.
Okay, in any event, so no one else from the county. I was gonna say that the people who are from the county who have applied now, we can keep their names on file. If there is a vacancy, we can certainly consider them. But right now, I think it's correct, Mayor, that you can only, uh, consider people who reside in the city for the vacancies.
So that being said.
Well, Miss Garrett?
Where did you get the five and two?
It's in the, uh, resolution.
Yeah, the.
In the resolution, okay.
Right, the original resolution.
It says, uh, majority, so that's why I was questioning.
It's, and, and so you know, and the mayor just sent this to me, uh, this afternoon. Whereas the city council is in terms of the commissioners aboard, the authority should include five citizens residing in the city. Um, and, and it does say five citizens residing in the city. So, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, what are the size of the board we are because we fulfilled, we, we started Tora, the city started Tora in two thousand fifteen. Two thousand sixteen, things changed. And they changed it in order to increase the number of board members, in order to increase the participants. So you could have a school board, a fire district, municipal, those, those kind of districts. We're gonna be looking at that. And so I'll say, as soon as that happens, the makeup and the composition of the board will change and the number of county folks will change as that goes. So there's an opportunity for us to look at that, but right now the bylaws are the bylaws.
Right.
So how do you wanna handle that?
I would say just begin with the interviews.
All of them?
Yes, well, not the people from the county, yeah, that would be the first question.
So I apologize, um, forgot, I didn't realize that the resolution stated what it stated. So those of you who are in the, I'll tell you who, and I, I know some of you are here. Amanda Lager, you do reside outside the city limits. Okay. Chad Derby, are you here, sir? He said he lives on Santa Fe Trail.
Right, doesn't list an address.
Doesn't list the address. So we'll just, and Scott Taylor, Scott Taylor? So Amanda, unfortunately, we, you know, you cannot, uh, get a seat on the Tora board at, at this point. Um, I apologize, but the resolution is specific on that. So we'll start with Ryan Garretson. Is Ryan Garretson here? That makes it easy. Chad Derby? Mark Welch. Thank you, Mr. Welch, for applying for this job, uh, on this board. We're gonna ask you a couple of questions. And, um, just to see if you're gonna be a, uh, good, yeah, for the, the Tora board. Um, I'll start with you, Aaron, and we'll go around and ask questions. Is that all right? You have any flaws in my procedures here, Mr. Downs?
No, 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 no flaws.
No flaws, yeah.
That's right.
Um, hey, thanks for being here. Um, what, what previous experience have you had that you think may, uh, serve you in being a member of this board?
Um, honestly, I don't have too much experience, uh, besides construction experience. Um, don't have any kind of city council ties or anything like that. So I would be kind of fresh and new to being on a board of any type. But with that being said, I don't really have any, like, like favoritism or anything like that. Like, I don't have, sure, I'm not, uh, easily manipulated or anything like that. Like people can't help me vote one way or do something for their favor.
Okay, all right, uh, I appreciate that. Mr. Garrett?
Um, do you have any time constraints or kind of board meetings or anything like that that allow you to naturally make certain meetings?
No, I do not. Yeah, attendance, attendance is obviously really important. Sometimes it's, uh, inconvenient to miss meetings.
No, I don't have anything that could be holding me from making it.
Not to mention it puts additional strain on, uh, the board members that are left behind. No, no constraints.
Hey, well, thank you for your interest in the board, uh, joining our, joining our Tora board. Let's see, um, do you know the difference between an advisory board versus a governing board?
No. Like, I have minimal experience with anything like that.
And, um, your willingness to, eagerness to learn, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Hugh? You moved back here three years ago?
Yeah.
Was there a reason that you moved back here? I mean.
Yes, uh, had some elderly family, uh, need some help, and so I moved down to help them out until I passed away.
And then you are going to stay here, make this your permanent home and interested in doing stuff?
Yeah, my wife ended up opening a cleaning company. She's doing really well and she likes it here. So we're invested in staying here for the duration.
Thank you. Mark, thank you for your interest. You know, transparency is very vital to any board that you're gonna be a part of. Uh, would you consider yourself a team player and can you give an example of how you've been a team player maybe in the past from other past experiences?
Uh, well, normally whenever I'm given a task, I jump on it and I work with anyone that is necessary to get the project done. I'm always open for suggestions or anything that can make processes move quicker and more, uh, efficiently. And just always voice my own opinion about my views on how something should go or if something needs to change. I'm not gonna hold back on speaking my opinion.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Aaron.
Hi, Mr. Welch, thank you for being here. How would you describe what you understand to be, uh, the role of this board and what it does?
Um, basically, it's just making choices about things to update and like fix for the city to make it a better place for residents and tourists to come and visit.
Okay, and have you ever attended their meetings or seen one online?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's okay, 'cause my husband was the chairman of this board for ten years and I still don't know what they did, so. He would just, I, I think this, I know this board is unique. It's not like any other board we have within the city. It's like, um, autonomous, that's the word I was thinking. So even though we, um, appoint you, you are working under the auspices of the state of Colorado, correct? So this board is gonna require you to go into training. I mean, not that you have to leave your job in your home, but I know there's training out there for Tora boards. It involves taxes, it involves, uh, improvements on properties. And it's, it's a very, um, complicated board, correct? You have to know the laws and rules and regulations by which you operate. So would you be willing to, I mean, you're gonna have to take some of that training in order to be a, uh, productive member of that board. Are you willing to do that?
Yeah, I'm always willing to learn new things that I can.
And I noticed that you have a construction company.
Yes.
Correct? Do you understand that if there's any construction companies, the Tora is construction projects, I'm sorry. The Tora is involved in, that you cannot participate in that construction project because it's a conflict of interest?
Yeah.
Okay. You have no qualms about that?
No, I stick with mainly residential, so I don't see how I would really interfere too much with what I do.
Have you, have you had any opportunity to talk to anybody on the board, like Mr. Halla?
No.
Okay. I strongly suggest that whether you're, you, you should talk to him. And you're the chairman, correct now?
Yes, ma'am.
You silly boy. I think you need to talk to Mr. Halla, so he can have true understanding of what this board, um, does. And it, like I said, it does involve taxes, it involves improvements to mainly the commercial area of Trinidad. You know, if where there's a will, there's a way. So if you're interested in getting the, um, education and the training, I think that would be great.
Yeah, most definitely.
Okay, I see. Thank you. Anybody else?
We definitely appreciate you complying.
Yes, I'm happy.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Eric, Thomas?
Good afternoon.
How are you doing? Let's start with the other Eric.
I'll ask you the same question. How familiar are you with what Tora does and what it's responsible for? So how would you describe that?
Um, I know that they take care of like dilapidated buildings, roads and stuff like that. But pretty much that's the limit to it by now.
And have you attended a meeting or?
Oh, no, ma'am, I have watched them on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, Derek, thank you for your interest. Uh, I need to ask you, what interests you most about wanting to be a part of this board?
Uh, city development. Just knowing where it's going and being a part of it. That's it?
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, just come back.
Okay.
Um, I apologize. Um, how would you react to negative social, uh, social media posts or media article concern of the board of the city?
I mean, the only thing I would do is just promote them to come in front of the board. I wouldn't, like, I couldn't say anything in my position in a negative way, right? But I could say, hey, I understand your concern, please come in front of the board and bring that concern to us so we can address the issue.
Great answer, thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
It was a good answer. Um, what about, I asked the same question. What about timepiece sharing and other, um, situations that would, will prevent you from coming to board meetings? Do you have anything like that in your?
Um, listen, I know that I am a member of Historic Preservation, so it would be one day after our meeting.
Word, perfect.
Derek, uh, thank you for being here. You're sort of a perennial board applicant. And, uh, we def, we definitely appreciate the, um, sincerity that you show and the interest. So, uh, sincerely from us, thank you.
Thank you.
I was wondering, uh, now that you have had some time on another board, how would you, how would you leverage that to, uh, aid what, uh, Tora is up to?
Well, see, I, I know that being a member of Historic Preservation, we can save some of these old buildings. So like, if they are dilapidated and they are gonna be tore down, maybe we can reach out to that owner. So like if they are dilapidated and they are going to be tore down, maybe we can reach out to that owner first and see, hey, maybe you could come to Historic Preservation and do something to that if you don't want to tear it down or have it tore down, I guess.
Right, okay, I, I appreciate that.
Other than in on the board?
You're on now. Is there anything else you could bring to the Tura board that you would like to share with us?
Just, I'm a fast learner, quick learner, quick study. Been in management all my life. And any job I've been in, I've been promoted to management within two months. Dedicated, hardworking.
You haven't, I, I don't, I missed a couple of questions here. You haven't attended any of the meetings or anything?
I have watched a few.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
So I'm going back to the training aspect of it because I, I don't know if watching it online is the same thing as seeing it in person. But I, I hope that if you're appointed to this board that you will make every effort to get the training that you need because it's, it's not as easy as it looks like on, on their state statutes by which you have to operate through. So are you willing to do that training?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
All righty. And that doesn't afflict, conflict with your preservation?
No, no, and from what I was told, they were handing it, so.
Oh, they do. See, I didn't, don't you, I didn't know about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks.
Thanks, Derek.
Okay, Richard Scott, David, are you there? How about Mike McNeil?
Mayor, I have a question I wanted to ask you. Because we've changed the schedule, do you think it's possible that some of the applicants thought they would wait until the first part of the meeting was over before they came?
It's a possibility, but if they come in, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt and interview them. But usually applicants for boards come, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Wauch and Ms. Flaherty.
I understand, I just think it's a possibility.
Okay, we'll check, we'll make sure in case. All righty, we only have two applicants that showed up, so. I, I'm shuffling paper, I apologize.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I? My predecessor did a great job of providing training together, onboarded us.
No, no, Mr.
My predecessor did a great job, ten years, awesome man. He did a great job of bringing us onboard. And he did a great job of making sure that we had opportunities and our budget allows for training. Our budget allows for us, we're members of the Colorado Downtown Incorporation. We've got an attorney that actually will help, so our plan will be, give us somebody passionate, somebody willing to learn. We need a board, we need a board to do some good work because we've got some things going on. We'll train them up, we'll invest in them, we'll make sure they understand where we're going, we'll onboard them quickly and we'll support them. But your board, your Tura board is ready to do a lot of things in 2025. And along with the city, we've got some really cool things that we can do, even housing, even on that side of the ledger. So send us somebody that has some passion and some interest. We'll onboard them, we'll train them up, we'll mentor them, we'll do good work for you, okay?
All righty, so thank you for being here. Item three, discussion of proposed river access ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. This ordinance was, had been kind of in motions from my predecessor. So I'm bringing it forward, want to have a good discussion. This has been put together a while, so just want to bring it forward and see what we can do. Part of the impetus is that we have an agreement when they built the Trinidad Lake Reservoir to see if Trinidad was not a part of the signatory on any of that, but Purgatory River Water Conservancy District is. And our agreement with them is to maintain the channel through town. Now, granted, it says fifteen thousand CFS. If we release fifteen thousand CFS, where I live on the hill is going to be, that's, that's a lot of water. There's been kind of revisions back and forth with the state engineer, water engineer, and corps of engineers. We're at five thousand. I don't know if any of you recall, probably three years ago, we had a pretty good storm that came through and they're required, required to release the storm flows out of that, heading down to Kansas. We got up to close to two thousand and it was overtopping some of the bridges out east and basically hitting the bottom of bridges here in town. So with that said, we just, we need to maintain that corridor. There's a lot of activity, including what we're doing with the river visioning that we, I think it's good that we have this in place. It also, this ordinance also has for tubing, fishing. We've had our fire department go through water rescue training. So I, I think it's, it's a good ordinance and I'll let council discuss. If you have any questions, I think Mr. Chatterley is, oh, there he is. He was part of, of kind of getting this moving forward with Mr. Ruber. So that said, look forward to an open discussion.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, Eric, do you have some? Start.
I under, I understand the need for it. I think if it's appropriate to have Mr. Chatterley present to the.
Give us his perspective?
Yeah, the high points and what's most important of it.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. Probably the high points, and I'll echo what the city manager just stated. Really in conversations with folks I've had about the development of those ordinance, they're surprised that we hadn't had something already, particularly with the fact of the agreement we have with the Conservancy District that, you know, because we are obligated to maintain some phenomenal water flows. Mike just mentioned that we should have had something in place to help us do that on a national resource management scale and also on a recreation management scale. So I believe it was, it was Audra who helped draft this, and I think having read through it, it pretty much hits every point as far as the need of the ordinance to be able to manage, whether it be kayakers or floaters or river improvements, whether it's done by an outside organization, just as we as a governing body and responsible for that maintenance, we have a means of being able to kind of keep track as to what's going on, when, where and how on, on the river.
As best we can.
As best we can.
Is, is there any particular event or instance in the past that having this would have altered the way that it happened in a beneficial way?
I can't think of anything specifically. I think there's just, in general, there's been things that have happened. Man, I don't think there's been anything detrimental, like, man, if we didn't know that, we could have prevented this horrible situation from happening. But just knowing in advance of, because I think there's been times where there might have been some efforts duplicated in some projects where nobody really knew who was doing what, when and where, that projects could have been planned better, we could have had a better understanding. Or maybe, particularly as we developed the river with the river visioning plan, having a knowledge of what other entities are planning on doing and perhaps, you know, a collaboration, this permitting process will allow the city to kind of know, know that and be able to work together or to say, well, this is, the bigger plan is what we have planned, well, how can we maybe modify different plans so that we're all working in the same direction at the same time?
And then lastly, is this modeled on any other?
So I, I did have conversations with the city of Fort Fun, Fort Collins. Fort Collins has the Pooter River that runs through, I did talk with Golden, and they have more of a recreation use of their river, whereas Fort Collins was more of an ecological permitting process. I know Salida has some different things, so it is based on some of the other. And I actually did reach out to the Colorado Municipal League initially and ask them, what is your recommendation on how we should pursue this? And it was their legal department that referred me to these other municipalities and said, these guys already have something in place, might be good to reach out to them and kind of, you know, instead of reviving the wheel, you know, use what they've got and modify it to what Trinidad needs.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Do you have any questions?
Sounds like a schematic issue versus a manpower issue. On the scale of one to ten compared to the other municipalities, where do we lie in that comparison?
We, we are kind of at the bottom. A lot of these municipalities, because they, you know, have already kind of developed their river in the way they want to, already have their infrastructure in place. You know, we here in Trinidad are beginning to do that with our development of a recreation economy and a recreation, you know, feel and also in just generally taking care of the river corridor. So we, we are, we have a little bit of a learning curve for me to catch on with some of these other municipalities. But this is something that I think being in places we do develop will be where we need to be.
Mr. Tridell, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand it completely and thoroughly, sir. So this is mostly for, it doesn't seem like it's events, but is like the everyday user, like let's say somebody just wants to go down there with a tube, do they have to come and get a permit? Or will they be able to go to?
They will be able to go to, so if the thorough reading, it says primarily for commercial use. So if there was an outfitter who was guiding on the river, fish, you know, fishing or a tubing company, a rafting company, they would be the ones that this would apply to. Mister public want to go down and fish on the river, you know, it's open for that kind of recreation use. Yeah, and also for different development projects, there's an organization who wants to do some work on the river that, you know, is beneficial. Of course, we want to know about that and help them if we can.
Okay.
Excellent, that clarified a lot, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fu, some of these rules and that, who's going to do the enforcing on this?
That would be a great conversation for the city manager. That individual will be responsible for either themselves or assigning a tube whoever they feel, whether it be out of the Office of Direct Recreation, maybe out of Public Works, Mr. Justice or Flood Plate Administrator, maybe that falls under that purview. It will be something that needs to be discussed, but that'd be the general approach.
Hi, Derek.
Hey, Derek.
And all of the processes, have there ever, were there any environmental concerns with the ecosystem or conservation practices?
Not really, but as we, anybody who walks along the river will definitely notice our, the trash impact.
Upward.
We've talked a little bit about our homeless population, maybe places that they may be able to find an encampment. All those things would be environmental impacts that we would want to consider along the river. But in general, you know, our goal is to have a very healthy recreational zone that has, had along the river and as we develop our trails and our open spaces, we want our river to be just as inviting as.
So good sustainable management.
Absolutely.
Eric.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand, is one of the goals of this ordinance to prohibit anyone from using anything but recreational tubes in the river? Like are kayaks prohibited or the other things that were mentioned, fishing float tubes, inflatable rafts, paddle boards, kayaks, mattresses, recorded hammock tubes, or other similar, similar important devices? Are they prohibited, is that the goal, or is it just to regulate the provision of commercial recreational?
Right, it is, it is not any way to prohibit. More than anything, it's just designed to manage, particularly on a commercial level. We would want to encourage, you know, individuals to go out and kayak and do rafting to utilize our river as much as we can. To me, it is, our river is the trifecta of outdoor recreation assets. We have Fisher's Peak, we have the lake, those are governed and operated by CPW. We have the opportunity to use and develop our river to be this third outdoor recreation asset. And this ordinance will allow us to begin that management process. So to answer your question, we don't really want to prohibit anybody, we just want to manage it, manage it as best as we can for the benefit of everybody.
What if someone comes up with a business where they want to kayak down the river?
Let's do it.
Okay, but that would not be, if this would not have anything to do with that?
Well, they would have to fill a permit as a commercial provider, just for like a raft, a float company, but it wouldn't be intended to prevent them. It'd be just intend for us as a city to manage how that river is being used. So we would reach out to them, hey, we want to start a rafting company, love to have it, come on in, let's talk about it. Here's the permitting process, once you get, we get that figured out, leave, I'll give you all the business you can.
I, I think it would be helpful then somewhere in here to kind of express that any commercial use of the river for recreation needs a permit? Is that what we're going for?
Commercial recre, you say, commercial recreation use, yes, that would need a permit.
And we might want, I think we might want to just make that clear.
Okay, sure.
That's it. So I've been going to these, you know, projects for a couple of years and it dawned on me, all this money that we're spending on planning this new recreational opportunity, we don't have any safeguards in place for the money. I mean, we've spent a lot of money just on the planning of this. And I think we have to do our due diligence by making sure that that money that we've spent is not going for naught. We have to make sure that that, that property is made, is taken care of. You know, there's a, most people think of it's better to beg for forgiveness than ask permission. I, I use that line quite a bit myself. I think that would stop people from trying to do whatever they want to do on that property. We're just doing our due diligence as a community. That's no different than somebody going and doing something in one of the parks that causes harm to the park itself or for people that are also using the park. You know, I, I kind of tend to think differently than normal people because I'm always worried about liability, what, what's going to happen? And that, that river land adjacent to the river is what we call an attractive nuisance.
So we lawyers call it.
Well, I'm sure it's, we've got a lot of common. So if we don't do our best to try and avoid situations down there where somebody can, if we're not doing that, if we're not informing the public, we can't do that, you, you know, that's dangerous. It's not what the city has intended that land to be. If we don't do that and somebody gets hurt, just the mere fact that we didn't try to do something has gotten us liable for whatever happens down there. And I was thinking too, I think it was last year or maybe the year before that, we spent a lot of money just clearing out that land. Somebody could very well go in there and decide to build something or do something with that property that totally destroys any benefit that came from cleaning. or do something with that property that totally destroys any benefit that came from cleaning that river. So I think, you know, it's no different than any other property that the city owns. We have rules and regulations for that. Yes, sir, and.
Something that you said, maybe I think about something else. Um, this is creating a defined space of a purgatory river called a purgatory river corridor, which is, uh, anything, I take it, that is a hundred feet from the riverbank. And some of that land is ours as a city and some is private, is I assume. Is this intended to regulate use of that private space along the river?
Hmm, by such, no. We can obviously probably not regulate private property, but we can, as part of that agreement, you know, suggest certain things that may need to be done because of being able to have fifteen thousand cubic feet per second flow down the, the river. But a lot of it is more for things that are going on that shouldn't be going on. There are some private landowners who are doing things in the river that can't, it shouldn't be done by everybody's understanding. Um, and so the, the, the purpose is primarily on city property. And if we were to, to acquire a lot of the unknown property along the river, this would then be effective of those properties. Um, but in general, it's just to, to help manage, regulate. I don't know if I can use the word regulate, but manage the use of the river the best way that's permissible for everybody involved.
And not to control whatever we can control, could it be all groups of, of that that we can, um, think?
With, with regards to, um, private property rights, I think obviously that's important, but I think there's already limitations on diverting a water channel.
Oh, absolutely.
Diverting water as it is, I think, um, that this is, is dovetailed into that capitalizes on those pre-existing conditions, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, that's correct.
Plus I would add that a hundred foot bank gap, that's flood plain. That's not very far and it's all in the flood plain, so they're really kind of more lived that way as well.
I think it makes sense as, as a girl, we need to have this because, yeah, it makes complete sense from what I keep hearing. Because if you have a group of kayakers coming down and a group of tubers and you've got fly fishing tournament all at the same day, we have no idea that's happening. And they can, they could all plan it and just go down there as it stands right now. So it kind of makes sense. It keeps them clustering, so.
Well, since, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, yeah, because, yeah, because I guess as it is right now, we don't have any way to, to say, or even have some track of who's down there.
Precisely, and that's what this would help is, you know, if, if there is an event or if, um, for example, maybe, um, the dam or something going on, if we have these permits, we can contact these outfitters or guides or whoever to say, you know, just as an FYI, this is happening, you would want to be aware of this. It just, it just helps us manage and control. I mean, same thing like, I think of, you know, with State Park. State Park has rules and regulations and ordinances to help just manage the use of, you know, so someone goes out there, like, I found a trail, needs to go right here, so I'm going to start building a trail. Well, obviously that's probably not going to happen because they have ways that that is planned out and done or use or events. So this just allows us to help us, help, you know, develop our recreation asset in the way that's best for everybody.
Well, we wouldn't grant Central Park to a commercial entity without them showing proof of insurance.
I think, I do, um, now, I just want to make sure in reading it, it says appropriate, uh, permits for work. So this will help ensure that any work that goes on meets all the, uh, aquatic requirements, riparian, uh, requirements of medicine. You have to ensure that, um, equipment is properly equipped, um, all the grease traps or whatever they call those devices and cash grease. And then if potentially people are applying, uh, herbicides that need to be licensed for aquatic applications such as that, I mean, that's all covered, right?
Yeah, so that's, that, and, and most of these organizations are very familiar with all that and, and, but we would be just kind of the last line of defense, for lack of a better word, to say, okay, you, you got it all, this is great, move forward, we're all in support. Everybody's on the same page. And mostly kind of also help with just the communication aspect of this is going on, that's going on. We know where everybody's at and we're all working for the same goal.
Anybody else have a question?
I have two more.
Yes. You're kidding, aren't you?
No. Last, I'm, I'm sure that you look through this and you have no concerns or objection.
That's correct.
Um, and then the last question I wanted to ask, and I don't know if it's to Jared or, or Mike to you, is there any, I, I asked about past activities that this would have altered. Is there any activities, agreements, existence of anything that if we put this in, that it's going to cause significant strife, concern, drama?
I really don't think so. I think it's just another check on, on, you know, a project outline, but I shouldn't anyway try to impede anything. It's just to help everybody understand what is happening and then the overall scheme of the river. But I, I, I would think, and that's at least in my intention is to stop anything from happening just to, so we all know what's going on at the same time.
I guess I have one more question.
Okay.
And then in creating this, did you reach out to any of the other, um, agencies that might be affected by this?
I didn't create it, so I can't necessarily speak directly to that. Um, I just brought it forth as something that we should do.
And Mayor, if I could please, I'm sorry, but we do have Howard Lackey and Julie Knudsen here for this. And I was just thinking that you may, and I don't mean to deviate from protocol, sorry, but you may want to call on them.
I think.
Would you have any questions?
Sorry, yeah, sorry. Can I ask before we move on, if that's okay?
Absolutely. No, nothing is up to me.
Okay, I just have one question because I did see him here, but I may not have read it correctly. So if they don't, let's say if somebody is caught, like you go down there and there's, uh, fly fishing tournament going on and they haven't gotten the proper paperwork, what do we have in, is that in there? Is there fines? Is there?
You know, that's, that's a good question. So I read through the ordinance and I didn't see that myself, so you can bring up a good point as far as like.
I thought it said that by resolution after the ordinance issue?
Probably the violation is the question.
It, it doesn't make it one of the risk of offense if that's my opinion. Relegation of privilege?
You gotta pay traffic.
To be in consideration for future applications, absolutely.
Okay. Um, Mayor, if, if I may, I, I think it would be behooves to hear from the other groups that are on an agency to the river briefly.
Are they, are they agencies or nonprofits?
Well, one of each.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, I just, I figured it would be best if you hear from them.
I think, I think it's better to hear before than after.
Right, right.
It's the river council.
It's a matter of, you can divert along so if you like.
Do you?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for bringing, um, Julie Knudsen with the Purgatory Watershed Partnership. Um, and as you all know, we've partnered with the city on a lot of river projects, probably brought a couple million dollars in so far. Um, so I have not seen this ordinance, I have no idea what's in it. Um, I do think it'd be great if we could have a work session on it so other people that do work on the river could at least add their comments. You wouldn't have to accept it, but it would be interesting to be able to weigh in because we haven't seen this at all. Um, I, I will just, again, having not seen it, I will speak to our experience in the past and in reference to Howard Lackey. Um, they have done fish habitat work in the river previously that, that was bomb proof, that got that floodwater hit it, you know, what, two months after it went in? And it, it has held really well against water, but not against homeless and not against certain, certain private landowners that live along the river that have gotten in and moved rocks and made little playpools and other things like that. So, uh, you know, again, I haven't seen it, but that would be one thing that I think would be very advantageous of this, is that we're able to enforce. Like when we do work, when Howard Lackey does work, we always have to talk to Army Corps, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Purgatory River Water Conservancy District, Division of Water Resources, get another permit from another Army Corps agency. We have to do so much permitting before we even get in the river. And then, and then work can be washed away in a second, you know, by silly people in the river. So yes, if this will bring teeth and enforcement tools, we absolutely are supportive of this.
The extraordinary census can't be.
And yes, so I don't want to confuse the two.
Oh, no, that's going to address another issue.
Yes, perfect. Yeah, that would be amazing. Um, I, I think in general, we would just hope to collaborate with you all. We would ask if you could talk to Kim Phelan of the Army Corps at the dam, if she'd like to see anything in this. Uh, Purgatory River Water Conservancy District, they are the ones sending flows down, so it would be nice if you could work with them. Colorado Parks and Wildlife, they themselves do not technically have a legal ability to force you to do anything, but with our recent shared GOCO grant, the three hundred thousand that we all partnered on, um, they, GOCO mandated that we work closely with Colorado Parks and Wildlife so that anything we're doing, at least with GOCO funding, we have to talk to Parks and Wildlife to make sure that we're not injuring, um, aquatic life or, or mammals. So it, so I would just recommend in your final development of this that you talk to the irrigators, you talk to Purgatory River Water Conservancy District and the water managers to make sure that the verbiage serves them as well. And honestly sets up a protocol, a, yes, my favorite word, collaboration, a protocol so that you're in better communication with all these entities. Maybe they're doing a fish, CPW is doing a fish shocking event where they're sampling fish. We would all want to know that before having kiddos in the river when they're doing fish shocking that day. Or, you know, the dam releasing water. I think you would want to know, okay, on those days, we don't want to have a big mega kayak event. Just maybe setting up some better, using this as a vehicle for better intercommunication. Um, that's, well, and also, um, the, the Purgatory River Downtown Trinidad River Park that we're all working on, that the city has put a bunch of money into, that we're working with Karen and Gil Ramirez and, and trying to coordinate with the Purgatory River Visioning folks. Every six months, we send out a letter, hey, let's talk, let's talk, let's set up quarterly meetings, monthly meetings. Um, but yeah, we would like to know that, that we're, this ordinance serves all of us and all of the developments that are coming along. I, in summary, I, I support it, but I would love to see it and see if we could tweak it a little bit if needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lackey.
Well, this is, as you all know, one of my favorite subjects on that, that we're all talking about it over at this stage because as of April, it's been fifteen years since we started this project. And we're at a point right now that it's, it's where I always envisioned it could be. We still have some really major glitches and some of them you, you all are trying to address with the homeless and some other things that go on there. One of the things I just would want to say, just kind of mirror what Julie is saying, we've worked extremely well as a small group to get a lot done on that river. And everything that we've done will benefit what you all are trying to do with river visioning and some of the other things. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here because it's all been done about twelve years ago. So when it comes to habitat, we've done invasive species removal. Uh, we've worked with Corps of Engineers, we've worked with all these guys and all these groups that understand, we know what we're doing. And so it would behoove the city and to communicate with us so that we can keep you out of trouble, which we had a little bit of issue with irrigators and, and Mr. Greenway, uh, that situation. So we can, we can avoid all that stuff and save the city a lot of money because a lot of it's already been done. So I would just implore that you do involve all the rest of us that are working on this thing for all these years to be involved in the process. You know, uh, access, the usages of the river. It's a great tubin' river, it's not going to be too good for kayaking, but you know, maybe someday if you get the fishing grid, wow, that's great. This is the third most important recreational facility this city has. And all we have to do is just take care of it. You know, we've, we've got a good start, we've got a great product here, so let's just all work together to make sure it's all for the best interest of everybody in Trinidad, quality of life, and of course, less the fish.
Of course.
Of course, the fish, so anyway, I just would hope that we could all kind of put this together. We can all talk with each other so everybody knows who's on first, second, and third. Baseball games only work better than, all right.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we have one more.
Um, this, this can, this could be shared, right?
Yes, it could be shared.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it. We want to collaborate. There was a lot of agencies mentioned except for the city of Trinidad. It brings the city of Trinidad into the mix.
In its current state, it can be shared for input.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's public.
Okay, item four, review of proposed camp.
I have one last question. On this version that we have, there are several places where there's highlighting, yellow highlighting. What is the meaning of that?
I'll ask the composer.
Oh, the composer.
So we don't, uh, we don't have a permit fee? So the permit fee would be set by resolution? So we'd have to work through that? This was the initial discussion. Um, then, uh...
It takes me to think about, I don't know, Mike, I'm sorry, just takes me to think about.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's the only, yeah, the only two.
And then there's a sample of the request for a permit at the end.
So what I anticipate, Council, Mayor, at your pleasure, we'll, we'll share this, we'll, uh, we'll get input and then it'll come before Council as an ordinance and they'll have a chance for, uh, public hearing too. So we can get it all, hopefully, ironed out before it gets that far.
All righty, going once, going twice, river access, solid. Uh, item on the four on the work session, an ordinance mandating Sections thirteen, two, chapter thirteen, uh, the Trinidad municipal code concerning park hours and camping.
Mayor, if I could please, just to begin this, we wanted to bring this before you. We think this is, you know, what Council is asking for, one of many things in the overall conversation. Um, and it just, want you to be able to talk about this and have you do this. And in fact, this is what you want me to do. In a sense, I get in previous conversations, is that this is what you are wanting to do. That is a camping ban. Um, and again, in conjunction with many other things. But, but just that, that's the beginning and, and then your thoughts. And there were a number of staff involved in this, so. And I do want to say one last thing, and that is, I, you know, used to think that this would be illegal, but the Supreme Court says it is not. Last summer, Corrins passed. Case.
Okay.
I'm, um, I'm really happy with it. Uh, how, how do you define embankment though? I mean, like, you know, what, what's gonna, what's gonna determine whether the campsite with, uh, associated, um, latrine pits and so everything that you end up seeing down there is on the embankment? versus high enough up the river to not be embanked?
Well, I, I would know it if I saw it. No, I, I know it's not a, a definition. I, I would just say, I think another one of the things would, would, uh, weigh in on that, you know, proximity to the river, whether or not it's like actually the slope or what we would consider, you know, the common sense definition to be the embankment of the river.
Historic flow channel might be?
Sure, absolutely. I think, you know, a probable case could be made for many portions of the area, again, in close proximity to the river, that would be the...
And so, I guess, it's a pretty obvious and basic question. If this goes forward, how will we implement, um, affecting it in, in, uh, in town right now?
That would be with police enforcement currently. Um, our camping ordinance is pretty basic. No camping in parks between ten PM and five AM, that's it.
Yeah.
So, this would give them some teeth for enforcement. Uh, embankments, I know you said historic flow channel. Um, I think the embankments are
Yeah.
more than just the historic flow channel. We want the embankment, so we can take a look at that and maybe better define it.
I, I, um, I'm very happy with this. I think that it's something that's been a long time coming and I appreciate seeing.
Nina, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I'm definitely, um, if I really am, man, you answered a lot of the questions from the bars enforcing the ban. Well, this is like a, I guess, if we sign, it says no camping in some parts of the park or they say no camping between those hours.
We, we, we would probably, um, I'm gonna say this, I probably won't be here, but we can get no camping
Right.
by ordinance number such and such, and, and style the ordinance and, and everything.
And the ability for the people that's in the park to say, you know, between these hours.
Okay, I just have, like, because where it says here in the verbiage, the prohibition of camping should be applied to all public parks, public property, and public trails, and then go. Did we, were we missing something?
There's something else.
Yeah.
What section?
Uh, whereas the prohibition, oh, whereas, what section?
Always in, um...
First section.
Oh, that's in the act, the verbiage.
The verbiage.
No, they, it doesn't, that's, that connects it. It makes it, they always end conjunction.
Oh, that's an, okay, so I was like, I didn't know if that was like our fill-in, like, if we had another location or, you know, somebody else, that's something else, yeah. We were like, huh, let's see, play Mad Libs on that one. But, um, yeah, no, it's pretty, read through it. It seems pretty much what we've been asking for, and the public's been asking for. So, I don't see any, um, the verbiage. Yeah, 'cause I think the embankment, I was trying to run through that one as well. And I always remember is whatever holds back the river, so it was a basic flag, if I remember, so...
Nothing.
Yeah, okay, that's all I got.
Mr. Shu? Well, I, I think it's something that we need, I just think the issues could probably force us on this
Yeah.
and take care of it. But the immunity, and whenever we get to another, it's gonna be a real question.
Right.
Sure.
I'm in agreement as well. Mike, who came up with the ten to ten timeframe?
Ten to five.
Ten to five?
Yeah.
I don't know about, that's always been on the books.
Right, well, that's been, that's been...
Yeah. Sorry, sorry. Wasn't, wasn't, you were already there.
Okay.
This kind of expands on the top.
Generally, I think that, um, this is something we wanted to work towards, but I do, um, I don't know if we've invited anyone from the police department to talk of this about it or to get input on it as we develop this, because they're the ones who have to make, who have to enforce it. And I, while, as Mr. Downs pointed out, it's not illegal for us to prohibit camping, I don't know what we will be asking those people who are doing it to do. Um, if you roust them out of a campsite, where are they gonna go? I, I guess that's their problem, but I also think that it would make a lot more sense if we had a safe camping, um, site designated that they could go. Otherwise, I just really don't understand how this is gonna work. And I want it to work, because I really do, um, think it's a problem that we need to address. It's why I wanted to take a more comprehensive approach to this before we did this. Um, I do have some little niggling things with the ordinance that, uh, I think could be improved, um, such as there, in the definition of what camping is, sleeping, which it says that these things are going to be considered determining whether reasonable grounds are believed to be reasonable for prisoners campers, camping one of them is sleeping or making preparation to sleep. Um, and I'm assuming that means that you can't nap in a park. Um, occupying a shelter outdoors is the second one. If there is a winter storm and someone occupies some shelter that they found, are we really going to ask the police department to go and get them out of there on a night where they could die because of the cold? Um, I, I just think that, I, I think that this is, this makes us feel good, because we're doing something about this problem, which is a very big problem for this city, but I don't think it's the complete answer. And I think it may create more problems than we're aware of. And I think we need to think about that. Uh, also, it's not clear, what is appropriate government authorization? Who is that, who tells them when it's okay? We say that the exception is that you can't, I can't unless you have appropriate government authorization. Who, who would give that, for what reason? I, these are just questions that came through.
And if I could, just a couple of thoughts, one is, one of the things we wanted to help with is the really, the, the problem now that everybody is, you know, that a lot of people have been commenting on, which is these sort of campsites that have expanded and become kind of semi-permanent, right? They're, they're larger, they're more visible, they involve, uh, you know, more people, and they will just see what they become a semi-permanent kind of campsite. Those things are, uh, really one of the reasons why we brought this ordinance before you first. It would, it's a very visible problem, a lot of people have been complaining on it, about it on social media and elsewhere. And so, we wanted to be able to, you know, I don't want to say roust, you know, the homeless, but it really is kind of what it amounts to, at least in terms of causing them to have to move so there isn't, you know, the, the equivalent of a, a camping village, really for lack of a better expression, in what has really become the most recent problem regarding the, the homeless. And I think this is absolutely part of the larger picture, including the possibility of a homeless encampment and, and so those other considerations. But that is the reason, I mean, again, I think a number of you have spoken on this, I'm about to shut up, but it, it's a problem, and you were, you were asking staff to address this, and what we could do to, to make that, you know, component of the homeless, uh, issue, uh, so we, we could address and kind of rectify. And so that, this is what we are doing regarding that.
Have we gotten any input from the police department about this proposed ordinance?
No, I, it was kind of, I think, more of a top-down approach. You wanted us to do it, we're doing it, and we're going to kind of tell them, you know, I mean, everybody is going to tell them what is happening and what has been done.
I just don't want to set them up for failure. I want this to be, I want whatever we do to be effective and well thought through. And I, I, I just feel like this is not adequate.
And I have had discussions with the chief regarding this. Um, basically, what he said is, I need more meat than no camping between ten PM and five AM. To, to, so that he could, you know, do his job, so...
Can I make this one a quick statement?
It's general, and I'm sorry, I know I opened this door. I'm so lucky, I'm sorry, it's really not considered a
Okay.
topic, but, but, I mean, if you want to, I'm just saying the general rule is at this point, you don't have audience coverage comment on things. But again, I know I kicked that door open earlier, so, you know, I, I don't want to, up to you, Mayor.
Go again, Mr. Lackey.
Okay. Uh, it's just a, a short observation is the fact that, not only, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You guys are making me nervous.
Yeah.
It's not, the camping ban, uh, of course, we had fires, which we've had down there, things like that. One of the, one of the big issues we have right now, it's really become a sanitary issue. Uh, the outdoor, uh, use for bathrooms is horrible. We had our cleanup last weekend, again, on, on last Saturday, and it really, with little kids and everything down there, we can't let them get into certain areas, because it is going to be a big health hazard if we don't get a handle on it.
Hmm.
It's, it's, it's a mess. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you.
I'm concerned, it, it is a huge problem, Aaron, but what I was concerned about is that over the past six or seven months, we've had people camping on Main and Commercial Street. I've had somebody camping behind a dumpster at our place of business and to the point where it's... I really, I understand, because I grapple with this. I, I'm at odds with myself about being a good human being and trying to help that situation. But when I sit on this, in this chair, I have to understand that I represent the people and the people are saying to us now, please do something.
And Mayor, I don't mean to imply that
No, no.
being, just being for this or opposed this makes you a good or bad person. I just want it to be effective.
I do too.
If you think about it, what we're saying is no public property can be used for camping, so where else will we go? They'll go behind your business.
Yes, right.
They'll go on Main and Commercial.
And they're going, they're going into abandoned homes.
Right.
But, this is, to me, it's a beginning of a large process. I keep thinking about the homeless encampment. How long is it gonna take for us to put the homeless in the camp? Uh, for number one, and for number two, do we have the money to do it? I mean, we've got to, I guess, sitting on our hands and not bringing anything is our exit option, and then by the time tourist season gets here, we're gonna have tents all the way up and down Main and Commercial.
But I just, what I, I really feel like I'm not getting heard is that how does this change that? How does this change that? We're not providing a place for people to go, so they'll just go some other place in the city. And it will continue to interfere with our going, present, our, put our best foot forward.
I understand.
Tourism.
And my, my thinking is, you know, when we talk about the norms of society and... Are we trying to make them conform to our lifestyle? Are, are we wanting them to follow our rules? Okay, if you live, you have to live by our rules, you're part of our society. I'm not wanting to do that. What I'm wanting to do is for them to respect our property. I mean, if we don't do something and Trinidad looks shabby, we're considering ourselves a tourism town and we can't have it. Look at our public restaurant, restroom stamp town. I understand your different, your point is different than mine, I guess. We're going this way and we both have the right idea, I think.
I think one thing is yes to this, and.
And we have to continue on.
Because if you don't have it and, we're not doing anything about it.
Yeah.
That, I agree with you.
I would, I just have one comment, if you don't mind, Mayor. Um, obviously, everyone, I think I can safely say, everybody feels bad about homeless embankments, and that's not actually what we're discussing here. We're discussing, um, people that put to hazard the entire city, city population, really. I mean, whether it's economically or health-wise, I mean, you know, no one has a problem with people setting up a tent and camping. Um, people do have a problem with, uh, the makeshift latrines, left behind drug use, the vitreous, that's actually a health hazard. And I think, to Council and Ogletree's point, we do need a comprehensive plan, but we need to start somewhere, and this is an easy-to-affect way to start addressing it. And it's, it's a valid point, if you run them off, where do you run them off to? Like, run them off to some other public park and you move them from there too, and eventually, they'll either hopefully find help in, in some sort of, uh, safety network that's available to them, or they might take advantage of moving to a place or back to a place where they have some sort of social safety net. That'd be my hope for them. If they choose to go to private land and say camp in your building, well, then that's up to the private landowner to, um, move them on from there. So, I think this is an effective way to start and something that addresses, uh, really growing public outcry. I, I'd like to have better access to the river without dodging all the problems that's associated. I think it's a, an effective means, that's my input.
Sure.
So, I agree with both points. So, it's, it's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to go balance them, because we think we don't know what we're gonna do with them, as has been said, you know, where they're gonna go, what resources we have. Uh, I do agree with this going forward first as the stepping stone, because we have to have that. And there's, no one has said it at all that we're done, once this is it. I know that's not a definite, there's other things that we need to look at as well, as long as we don't give up on them, you know, that's the main thing. If we let this be the last thing that we have given up on, you know, there's more things that we can do. Because as of this point, I do have a concern, you know, with it, but I know it needs to be done for our downtown area, and because the concern that I have is because of what's been happening in my neighborhood, you know, I'm like, I've already, this is, I have a house burned down just a couple of days ago. You know, that's number four in my neighborhood, you know, from people going in there to stay warm. And I feel horrible for them, but it, it's getting scary to where it's, again, it's economically impacting our area, plus it's, it's hitting all our resources as well. You know, so this is a good step, but the main thing is, I think, we need to realize as a collaborative, we can't give up. There's other steps we can take, and we just gotta keep moving forward. So, we'll start here and then next, come up with the next plan, bring it up again, whatever we need to do. And I think, you know, I think that's our best bet to go for there. Uh, it can't be for everybody else, but it just, we can't, we just can't give up on that this is the end.
Anybody else on the days? Okay, that's the end of our work session. We will up to special meeting. Hold on, the real please, Kim?
DeVano?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Churchill?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Langson?
Here.
Creago?
Here. One item on the special meeting, item one, consideration of professional services agreement with GMS Engineering to provide engineering and grant riding services for the replacement of the transmission line along the old Sopers Road and authorizing submission of it.
That name there, helpful?
Howdy.
Time to do five minutes, just here now. Hit the road, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a recommendation to City Council, I have a... Uh, consideration approval of the quote from GMS Engineering to provide engineering and grant riding services for the old Sopers Road transmission line replacement. Um... Ben, which way to start, one on one? Ben, which way to start, while I want to keep less here? For consideration of the quote from GMS Engineering professional services agreement to do the designing and grant writing of the old Sopers Road transmission line replacement. GMS Engineering is one of our own color engineering firms currently contracted with City of Renham. They would be applying for the, on the city's behalf for a grant with DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, due on April 1st of 2025, which will require 50/50 match. They would also be reallocating the SRA, the state revolving funds, to be applied toward our match if qualified for the grant. We currently have 5.4 million of funds available toward a water tank rehabilitation project. Of this state revolving funds at 3.4 million. If we reach the maximum capacity, we would have a 2.2 million forgiveness, and we'd only have to borrow 1.2 million at two and a half percent interest rate, low interest rate over 20 years. If we don't reach that full 5.4 million, we'll actually lose some of that grant, that money. We have so far committed 3.3 million, 619,696 dollars toward that. Black Beach Engineering, we've committed 283,801 dollars. WBS Coatings Incorporated, we, City Council approved 3 million, 98,121 dollars to go toward the water tank rehab. City Council also just recently approved a change order of 237,774 dollars, which totals 3,619,696 dollars, which leaves us with 1,783,304 dollars of available funding that we have not used. If we don't use that, we obviously will lose that. We have about 2,600 feet of transmission line on the old Sopers Road that's approximately 100 years old. I, in your pack, as I provided a, an easement that was put place in 1913, they gave us 10 years to put that pipeline in, if not, we lose that easement. So the pipeline literally is 100 years old. It's a 24-inch steel pipeline. We have had an issue with it this past fall that the Water Department Repair was able to stop the leak on the line. It's in bad shape. We don't know how long that repair is going to hold. It's, I, we gave, oh, there's some, three other pictures in your pack showing where it comes up above ground and goes over a trestle over a ditch, an arroyo, so to speak. What's lifting? It's lifted some of the concrete. We've had to drill through that ed wall, put some steel rods and weld some pipes to the pipe in order to hold it. Then we were able to tighten some dress and repair clamps that are on it and got the leak to stop. So it's a band-aid, there's no telling how long it's going to last. But that does speed our old talent. It's right here on the old Sopers Road, feeds our pump stations, it feeds our infrastructure. There was a DOLA grant available, I think April 1st is the deadline. Dana, who's a grant writer with GMS Engineering, has reached out to the James Wheatley with the state revolving fund and asked if we can reallocate some of this unused funding that we have to go toward this old Sopers Road project. And he said, yes, more than likely that would be possible. So if we apply for this grant, the 50/50 match, if we get the grant, we can reallocate the leftover money that we have not used to go toward our match on the old Sopers Road project. So this is asking Council for approval to hire GMS Engineering to move forward with the design and apply for the grant and then try to reallocate some of the unused state revolving money to go toward that match.
Mayor, would you ask a question?
Sure.
Um, thank you. Uh, unless, you know, I've been thinking about, and I've been wondering, from a public perspective, we just did approve that change order.
Yes.
Um, in approving the change order, we haven't altered the funding of the entire project, is my understanding. We just, we added to the scope and the cost of the work that was being done in effect.
You are correct, Aaron.
Okay. Um, so this is, uh, again, without changing our funding package, you're trying to over-leverage the existing funding package that we have to effectuate more work for the town.
That's correct.
So my question is, um, if, you, I presume you know, I'm sorry. In, in the modeling that's been done in Waterworth, is, is all of this funding already taken into account? And if, if we continue on the track that you're suggesting, we're not knowingly saddling ourselves with a appreciable rate increase in the next year or two? This, this is, this is the same funding modeling that is in Waterworth currently?
Yes.
We're, we're just, we're gaining, we're leveraging extra work out of it?
That's correct. If, if we were able to accomplish this, it would help curb less of a water rate increase because this old Sopers Road project is in the Waterworth for future funding, but if we could get it done with this, it can help curtail future water rate increases.
Okay, I think, um, from my perspective, that's just important that we, this is almost impossible to do, I'm about to say, that we, um, control the narrative that this isn't expanding the financial package that we have, it's just more fully utilizing the financial package that we have that is already accounted for in Waterworth. I, I think that's an important undertaking because it would be easy to manipulate this.
That's correct.
I have no other questions, Mayor.
Naaman.
That's a good question, Mayor, appreciate that.
I have no questions, though.
That's very informative.
Oh, I got it, no, I'm kidding. No, we're bank for a buck, that's basically the look at it, is get as much out as we can, and now if we've got the money, we might as well, might as well use it, if not, it's gone.
It is, and the thing is, is most time when we go out to do projects, we usually have a shortfall of them. So this is one of those situations that's just on the opposite. We have more funding, while the injure is estimated to be more than what it, the bids came out to be, that's the reason we have more money available to us. We need to find ways to use it, and this infrastructure is very critical to our water supply, so if we can get this done with these funds, we'd be just a step ahead of the game.
That's a great idea.
No questions, Mayor. Good.
So as I understand your conversation with Councilman Williamson, you're saying this
is something we had always planned to do, but that perhaps some idea came to you that we could use the revolving fund to, to pay for this, is that
That's correct. We, we're not sure if we're going to have this much surplus of funding available, so once we found doubt that we were going to, we need to look for a way to use it. So Kim, Dana, she's a grant writer for GMS, we talked to her, and she said she's seen that done before, where you can reallocate that. She looked at the ARPA, but that's been, had to be committed by the end of last year, so that's already committed to the water tank rehab, we can reallocate that. And DOLA, Mike Valentine, our city manager, talked to DOLA rep, and that's a little tougher to do that one, so the state revolving fund would be the easier one. So she talked to James Wheatley, and he said, yes, that's a good possibility. We would just need to let her wanting to reallocate it, and that is a good, nothing's guaranteed, but it's a good possibility that that could take place.
Is there any other use of the revolving fund that we were anticipating in 2025?
That was just strictly for the water tank rehabilitation.
And then the other question I had is that I noticed that the Old Aliment is more, it looks like to me more of a B-line along there.
Good, yeah.
It's this green line, and then what we're proposing is to go out along, oh, so
On the channel of
Why not just get the Old Aliment?
To the easement, it's a 24-inch water main, and if you try to lay another 20 or 24-inch water main next to it, as old as that is, with the digging and the excavation, we could lose our pipeline. There's not enough room in there to create, to not create a mess. So if we, and plus
So we keep that one going and
If we could get it to the county road, then we could do away with the easement on all that type of property, I mean, beyond the county road right away.
Is it going to disrupt the roadway usage?
It would, but yet they'd have to work along with, they, they come in off Interstate or they come in off of, by the Turner Lake to come in where the housing is, so they, they have around, getting during construction.
Okay, we'll let people know.
Oh, of course.
Okay. My question.
I never realized the Sopers Road came, because that's the trailer park there, right?
Correct.
South of town. I didn't realize the Sopers Road went through there.
Yeah, if we had a catastrophe by that trailer park, we could probably wipe out quite a bit of that Moma Home Park if that line blew up, where that area is. So yeah, it's best to have them on county roads or in rightways, though it'll private property, what we have to deal with.
Yeah, because that existing line runs straight through the
It does.
Moma Home Park. Okay, sounds good to me, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
I have one more question, if I may.
Oh, sure you do.
I can see your, your questions. I know you do. Um, I know, in, in effect, this is money that we are using, or at least by my estimation, we're using money that we would have been holding in reserve for the duration of this project in fact, right?
That's correct.
So, um, and you maybe did mention it, how much, after this expenditure, is there any further reserve?
There, it's going to depend, so in the, the DOLA grant that's available to apply for, DOLA, they have around $30 million available. There's a shortfall this year, I think, 50 million, they told.
Possibly.
So, and there's less money, so
Okay.
There was 30, there was 10 to 15.
Do we, do we anticipate, and I, and I know this is impossible, but to the best of your ability, through discovered conditions, you, you think we're probably not likely to suffer any major change orders through the rest of the duration of this?
Not major. We have one coming up, but it's anticipated, and it was built into the scope of the project. We, they added $250,000 to the project, knowing that we had to do some pipeline work to make this, this happen. But that's already anticipated and built into the original scope of the 3, $3,098,000 is built into that arrangement, so.
And last question. This, this is in effect, it's sort of a, a high likelihood gamble, right? I mean, we may not get, this may be unsuccessful.
We may not get the full 50%. We may get, I'll let Mike refer to that if you spoke to him.
Yeah, so the, here's to a DOLA grant request is a 50/50 match. It was 30 million for several years, and now they're down to between 10 and 15, they don't have to file others.
Okay.
So it could be that we, we don't get the full ask. We do have the match, that's good, that's coming out of the SRA, so that's always a positive. We are an impacted community, that rates a sign. Depending on how it, it plays out, if we don't get it, we're going to have to figure it out, because if we don't do this, you're going to have some nice, pretty shiny tanks with no water to get to them because this transmission line is 100 years old
Yeah.
And we've experienced problems, so that's a, a big push toward DOLA when we present. Um, so
Okay.
You're never guaranteed, but I think we've got a good case.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Yeah.
I have no further questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Do we need to organize today?
Yes, this is
Fair action.
Okay. I need a motion?
Salute.
Second. Shu. Call the vote, please.
Devono.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Trigell.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Grago.
Yes. Okay, that's the end of the special meeting. Item two on the agenda is executive session. There's two items. For the purpose of determining positions relative matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E, city manager, and item two, for a conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under CRS Section 24-6-4024, legal avoidance. Motion to move, go into executive session.
Salute.
Sit.
Aaron?
No. Naaman.
Naaman, okay. Call the vote, please.
Devono.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.